Okay, it is eight thirty.
It's six thirty.
August the fourth, and I'll call to order the Moore City Council meeting. If you would call the roll, please.
Kathy Griffith.
Sid Porter.
Here.
Melissa Hunt.
Here.
Louis Williams.
Here.
Adam Webb.
Here.
Rob Clark.
Here.
Mark Ham.
Here. And tonight for our flag presentation, we have Sadie McDonald with Girl Scout Troop seven ninety-eight will be leading that and giving us some instructions. So Sadie, if you'll come on up and lead us.
Will the audience please stand? Color Guard, attention. Color Guard, advance. Color Guard, post your colors. Color Guard, honor your colors. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, when it is public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Color Guard, dismissed. Audience, you may be seated.
Thank you very much. Y'all did a wonderful job.
Great job.
Yep. Item C, I have a proclamation declaring August eighteenth through the twenty-fifth, two thousand and twenty-five as the five oh seventh air refueling wing week. Yeah, it is, a little bit. So I'll read this proclamation. It says, whereas Colonel Matthew Gormley has been commander of the five oh seventh air refueling wing at Tinker Air Force Base since two thousand and twenty-three, and whereas the five oh seventh employs one thousand one hundred citizen airmen, and whereas the five oh seven operates and maintains eight KC one thirty-five Stratotanker aircraft, providing worldwide aerial refueling to US and NATO aircraft in times of peace, war, and national emergencies, and whereas the five oh seventh recently performed a vital role in the Middle East, and whereas the five oh seventh also provides peacetime administrative support functions for the five hundred and thirteen air control group, the Air Force Reserve Command's only airborne warning and control system organization, and whereas the city of Moore recognizes the economic impact of Tinker Air Force Base to our community, and whereas the city of Moore is the home of numerous activity military personnel, reserve military personnel, and retired military personnel. Now therefore, I, Mark Ham, Mayor of the city of Moore, do hereby congratulate Colonel Matthew Gormley on his successful tenure as the commander of the five oh seventh air refueling wing, and do hereby proclaim the week of August eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-five as the five oh seventh air refueling wing week in the city of Moore. Signed and approved this fourth day of August, two thousand and twenty-five. And the Colonel's here, and we'd love for you to come up and maybe say a few words.
That's the first statement.
Let me go ahead and present.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So I have, I've been here about two years. And on the drive over, one of my folks and I were talking in the car, and it just hit me. I didn't say anything in the car, but it hit me emotionally that this is coming to an end. And after two years of never, never living in Oklahoma before, this, the reason we are so successful as a wing, meaning Tinker Air Force Base is a monstrosity, and we are one, one wing on that base, but the reason we are so successful is because of the community. That's just a fact. And we are the Okies. That's who we are. We're the five oh seventh air refueling wing Okies. So we are you. We represent everything that you are. We represent your values, work ethic, you name it, that's who we are. And we're proud to be here. And it, it didn't take me long to understand why our wing is so successful, and why the culture of our wing is unlike any other in the United States Air Force. It is you. And I'm gonna miss that. I'm gonna emotionally miss not being an Oki. But we do have a saying, once an Oki, always an Oki. People will welcome me back, but, but I won't be wearing this patch for very much longer. But thank you in advance for everything you've done. Oh, thanks, sir.
For everything you, I guess, thank you for everything you did for us for the past two years, and will continue to do for our wing. So thank you very much.
Yes, sir. Thank you. And y'all are welcome to stay, or if you need to leave, that's okay, too.
I'll leave.
Okay. No problem. Thanks. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Item two is our consent docket.
Make a motion. We approve the consent docket. Items A through J.
Second.
We have had a motion and a second for the consent docket. Would you call the roll, please?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Consent passes. Item three is consider filling four vacancies on the planning commission, two of which serve a three-year term, and one will fill an unexpired term, and one will fill an unexpired one-year term.
Excuse me, Mayor and Council. We have four vacancies on the planning commission. Some of these are due to our older members rotating off, and some are due to people who have resigned midterm. We have held a series of interviews along with Councilmen Williams, Webb, and Clark, and we interviewed five individuals to fill four slots. We are recommending that Wendy White and Timothy Houston fill the three expired three-year terms, and a two-year term to be filled by Daniel Beavers, and a one-year term to be filled by Pete Ruston. If you have any questions, I would be happy to answer them.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item four is consider filling two vacancies on the Board of Adjustment to serve a three-year term.
Mayor and Council, these vacancies are due to the existing members being term limited off the commission or the board. And the city code does require that we have two planning commissioners serve on the Board of Adjustment. With the two expiring members, we would have no planning commissioners on the board. So two members have been agreed to serve on the Board of Adjustment, two of our new members, Ms. Wendy White and Timothy Houston.
Okay.
Recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. And we appreciate welcoming these new members and look forward to them serving our city.
Three of them are in the audience tonight.
Awesome. Both wave at us.
Turn here.
Thank you. Great.
Great. Thank you, guys.
Glad to have y'all. Item five, consider ordinance number forty-one twenty-five amending Part twelve, Chapter fourteen, Storm Water Management, Article A, Section twelve, fourteen oh two, by adding reference to the Oklahoma Pollutant Discharge Elimination System, general permit number OKRO four, and prohibiting illicit connections to the municipal stormwater system, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
Mayor and Council, items number five through eight are companion items. Each year, we have an audit from DQ on our stormwater program, and this past year, they did notify us that we need to add in some more requirements to our ordinances. These are requirements that are set out in the state permit that is approved by DQ. So that is why we are doing this, and I will just go through each ordinance and let you know exactly what's changing, because they do deal with different subjects, unfortunately. This first ordinance does add illegal connections to the storm sewer systems as a violation. So we would be able to issue citations for that.
Has that been a problem?
That is not a known problem, but again, it's just a requirement from DQ.
Makes sense.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item six is consider ordinance number forty-two twenty-five amending Part twelve, Chapter fourteen, the Storm Water Management, Article B, Section twelve dash fourteen seventeen D, to require permanent or temporary soil stabilization to be applied to distributed areas within seven days on the areas that remain unfinished for more than fourteen calendar days, providing severability and providing for repealer.
This ordinance requires soil stabilization for construction sites that is required as soon as possible or within seven days.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Item seven is consider ordinance number forty-three twenty-five amending Part twelve, Chapter fourteen, Storm Water Management, Article C, Sections twelve dash fourteen twenty-one through twelve dash fourteen twenty-five, by clearing equivalency of requirements to be considered a land disturbing activity, requiring the land disturbance activity permit applications to include best management practices and structural controls, including low-impact development techniques meant to improve stormwater quality and provide for provisions for the long-term maintenance of the best management practices and structural controls, providing for severability and providing for repealer.
This ordinance has quite a bit of topics that it's dealing with. It does clarify that who needs a land disturbance permit from just the one acre that we have typically enforced to include smaller parcels of less than an acre, as long as it is part of a larger development that is an acre or more. So this would prevent people from parcelling off smaller sites just to get around the requirement. Another thing that it requires is a post-construction best management practices and controls. And in addition, it does require a consideration of low-impact development whenever they are determining which best management practices to put into place. It requires parking lots to minimize impervious surface where possible, and it, and to minimize the direct connection of a parking lot to a storm sewer. So in other words, the DQ would like for our parking lots to drain into some sort of system that would help clean the water before it gets into the storm sewer system. It could be something as small as, like, just a grassy swell. It also requires maintenance agreements with HOAs that own best management practices such as detention ponds and retention ponds.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Okay. We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item eight, consider ordinance number forty-four twenty-five amending Part twelve, Chapter fourteen, the Storm Water Management, Article F, Sections twelve dash four fifty-one and twelve dash four fifty-three, by adding a list of authorized non-stormwater discharges into the municipal separate, separate storm sewer system, and prohibiting commercial vehicle wash water from being discharged into the, into the municipal separate sewer system, providing for the severability and providing for a repealer.
Mayor and Council, this ordinance simply lists out all of the authorized discharges that you can have within your storm sewer system without incurring a violation. It's just a long list of things that happen on a day-to-day basis that is allowed.
So the commercial vehicles being washed, where does that water need to go?
So for commercial car washes, it actually goes into a separate, it's like an oil-water separator, and so it's cleaned before it gets into the, and I think it actually is discharged into the sanitary sewer system. What this would allow is for residential customers, property owners, to wash their cars in their driveways. You might have a charity car wash on the corner of Twelfth and Eastern. They are allowed to conduct their, their charity activities.
Okay. Very good. Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item nine is approve a contract with the Central Oklahoma Transportation and Parking Authority, doing businesses embark to provide non-emergency medical transportation services for seniors over sixty years of age with fifteen thousand in matching funds from the city.
Are you doing this, or am I doing this?
Mayor and Council, this is just a renewal of annual contract. Recommend approval. Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Mark.
Yes. Item carries. Thanks, Elizabeth, for you and all that your team does. Y'all are very busy. Item ten is consider acceptance of a quote from Jones Service LLC for a weekly cleaning of sanitation trucks, and the annual amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred twenty dollars is the lowest quote.
Mayor and Council, this is to keep our sanitation trucks clean, and they'll also clean other vehicles on a weekly rotation basis. They'll do ten a week. That keeps the maintenance cost down as they're cleaned, and you know how sanitation trucks could get running around town. So I recommend approval for this.
So how often do we wash the sanitation trucks?
We, we have eight vehicles en route. We wash them every week, and then we rotate another two through the system, like our Terminator trucks and all that.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
How was, how was this in comparison to last year and the cost?
Last year, we didn't do it.
Okay.
Last year, towards the end of the year, I started looking. So it's something I see as a need for the city.
So they come out to our facility and do the washing there?
They come to our facility. We have water, oil separators already in the system, and they come out there and clean them, and we watch them do it, make sure they're meeting the standards.
I have noticed in the past they can get a little unprofessional looking, so I'm glad we're doing it.
Not anymore.
Yeah, I'm glad we're doing it.
Thank you.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Okay, we've had the motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item carries. Item eleven is consider authorizing the budget purchase of a John Deere sixty-one ten M tractor with a twenty-two-foot cradle boom attachment and a fifty-inch rotary mower head in the amount of one hundred eighty-four thousand five hundred dollars using Sourcewell contract number zero eight two nine two three dash DAC.
Mayor and Council, this is to help maintain our drainage channels, and you know that can be an issue. This apparatus can actually reach down into the areas we can't get with mowers and mow them. So it's, it's to help maintain our system.
Yeah.
Perfect.
I recommend approval.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. You can call the vote.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you, Dennis.
Thank you.
Item twelve is consider approval of a new job description for a senior customer service representative in the Customer Service Division of the Financial Department at the Public Safety Center, and assign a pay grade of one oh eight of the salary table approved by the city council on June twentieth, two thousand and sixteen, and in accordance with the budget approved by the city council for fiscal year twenty-five twenty-six.
Mayor and Council, the Finance Department requests approval of the submitted draft of a new job description for senior customer service representative in the Customer Service Division. The new job descriptor will more accurately reflect the organization of the division and the duties that need to be performed. Some of these duties include providing advanced administrative support to the division, coordinating division activities, serving as a lead worker, and serving as the acting customer service supervisor in their absence. This budgeted position should be assigned to grade one oh eight of the pay scale for the most accurate placement based on the duties, responsibilities, and accountabilities assigned. Staff recommends approval, and I'll be glad to answer any questions you may have.
So is this a new position for us?
A new position. It is a budgeted new position.
Okay. All right. Very good.
Very nice.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had the motion and a second. Would you call the vote, please?
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Item thirteen is consider amending the agreement with Catholic Charities of the Archdiocese of Oklahoma City, Inc., funded with community development block grant dash COVID funds to change the scope of services, capital planning, and resiliency.
Mayor and Council, the city entered into an agreement with Catholic Charities in September of two thousand and twenty-four to administer a rental deposit assistance program for more residents. However, the demand for this program wasn't as big as they had anticipated. They're seeing a bigger need for rental assistance than rental deposit assistance, so they've requested to add this to their scope of services. The, all of the, all of these services will still be funded with the CDBG COVID nineteen funding. Recommend approval.
So does this conflict with any of the other services that were?
We do still have two other agencies that provide the same services, but one has been completely out of funding for several months now, so.
I imagine there's quite a need for it, so.
It's a huge need. Yeah.
Okay.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
We've had a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. Thank you. Item fourteen, consider approval of a modification of the Personnel Policy and Procedures Manual by modifying the observed date of holidays for dispatchers and changing the number of hours of holiday leave granted to employees to equal their regular number of shift hours.
Mayor and Council, this is a change to our policy and procedures manual, and this is doing basically two things. One is, the way it currently reads is that if you work on a observed holiday, you get one and a half times your normal rate of pay, plus eight hours for the normal holiday pay. Problem with that is, is that we have some employees that do not work an eight-hour shift. So for example, the sanitation workers, they would get paid ten hours. So we just changed that to, I removed eight hours and just added the number of hours of a regular shift. So that would correct that problem. The other problem that we have, the other thing that we're changing to this, to this policy, is dispatchers. I can give an example on this. If our holiday falls on a Saturday, let's just say July fourth was on a Saturday, we would observe that holiday then on Friday the third. Right now, the way the policy reads is, is that if you work on the observed holiday, you get holiday work, you get time and a half. So the dispatchers who work seven days a week, no matter what, they could come in on a Friday, July the third, get holiday work, time and a half, and the dispatcher that comes in the next day on July fourth would not get anything. So what we have done here is, is that for the, those dispatchers, the observed holiday would be the actual holiday regardless of whether it falls at a weekend or not.
Because they work seven days a week.
That is correct.
That makes sense.
Make a motion. We approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Rob Clark.
Yes.
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams.
Yes.
Adam Webb.
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item passes. And we do have a addendum to our agenda. Item fourteen point one, consider adopting resolution number one fifteen twenty-five, authorizing the application for the Community Economic Resiliency Initiative Planning Demonstration Site Program funded by the Association of Central Oklahoma Governments.
Mayor and Council, this grant application became known to us just last week. We are proposing to use this grant for additional planning for Cleveland Heights. Right now, we have a land use schematic that's in our comprehensive plan for the quarter section for Cleveland Heights. But in order to make that scheme actually work, we would need to have some, a framework for development regulations. And then we also need to just reaffirm that that is indeed the land use that we would like to have for Cleveland Heights. If we are approved for this grant, there would be a maximum of three thousand dollar match, but the grant would be worth twenty thousand-plus dollars for ACOG and the OU Institute for Quality Communities to come in, and it would be a semester-long project where they would do some planning services for us for Cleveland Heights.
Okay. Make a motion. We approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Would you call the vote?
Kathy Griffith.
Yes.
Sid Porter.
Yes.
Melissa Hunt.
Yes.
Louis Williams. Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, thank you, item passes. At this time, we're going to recess the City Council meeting and convene the Moore Public Works Authority meeting. Item 15 is the Consent Docket.
Make a motion to approve Consent Docket A and B?
Second.
We have had the motion and a second, you can call the vote, please.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes. Item 16, Consider Approval of Amendment Number 1 in the amount of $123,300 to Work Order Number 3 with Garver LLC for Design Improvements to the Wastewater Treatment Plant Sequential Batch Reactor Building and the Ultraviolet Affluent Pump Station.
Chairman and trustees, items 16 and 17 are companion items that were discussed at the July 7 workshop that we had regarding improvements needed at the wastewater treatment plant. Item 16 addresses or allows for design improvements to the SBR building and the Ultraviolet Affluent Pump Station that address and help take care of the problems that we have with moisture inside the buildings, which create corrosion, along with some odor control issues. We would recommend that you approve the authorization for the design improvements.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
We have had the motion and a second, would you call the vote?
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Item passes. Item Set 17 is Consider Approving Work Order Number 4 with Garver LLC in the amount of $350,000 for Design Improvements to the Wastewater Treatment Plant North Storm Pond Aeration System as part of the Master Agreement for Professional Services.
Item 17 addresses, allows for the design improvements to the North Storm Pond Aeration System. The North Pond causes odor problems after we get rainfall events of two to three inches and greater. That averages, we probably can get those pretty difficult odor control problems that are 30 to 35 days during the year, and so allowing this design to occur would take care of that. Currently, the North Pond does not have any aeration or mixing in the storm pond, and allowing us to move forward with this design would address the odor control complaints that we receive at the plant.
Make a motion to approve?
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. At this time, we're going to recess the Moore Public Works Authority meeting and convene the Moore Risk Management Meeting. Item 18 is the Consent Docket.
Make a motion, we approve Consent Docket Items A and B?
Second.
Would you call the vote, please?
Kathy Griffith?
Yes.
Sid Porter?
Yes.
Melissa Hunt?
Yes.
Louis Williams?
Yes.
Adam Webb?
Yes.
Rob Clark?
Yes.
Mark Ham.
Yes, item passes. Now, we're going to recess the Moore Risk Management Meeting and reconvene the City Council meeting, all members that were present are still here. Item 19 is new business, nobody signed up to speak. Item B is items from the City Council trustees. Anybody?
I would like to just commend Chief Gibson, went to the chamber last Friday and did a presentation, and Cam, I appreciate you all for having that first Friday event that you have with different speakers, and Chief Gibson, as always, did a great job and had a lot of questions asked of him and stuff, and thank you for representing the City of Moore, outstanding, and thank you, and thank you for all you do at the chamber, too.
And I'm going to ask our chief to come up and speak just a little bit about National Night Out, which is going to be happening, so if you can make your way.
Yeah, tomorrow night.
Yep. If, and the Moore War Run is going to be August 23rd, and it starts at 7:30 a.m. If you're interested and want to know what it's about, the Moore War Run helps fund scholarships and other activities for the students of Moore and Westmore High Schools by the Moore and Westmore Alumni Associations, they've been doing that since 2009, it's volunteer-driven, and so far, they've raised over $200,000 for the students. If you want to know more, you can go to their website, and it'll be there, or their social media page, and we also have some posters, and I guess Deidre, we can put these up in different places throughout the city, so we appreciate that, and also, I think Deidre's looking for some additional help, if you want to help her at some of the watering stations, Council, just let her know. Anyways, Chief Gibson, if you wouldn't mind just saying a few words about our upcoming National Night Out?
Yes, sir, it's tomorrow night, from 7 to 9, at the Warren Movie Theater. Council member reporter, thank you for the kind words about Friday, I echo my support for Ms. Brown and the work the chamber does, it's great to have an opportunity to come out there and talk about the different things that the Moore Police Department's doing. We did get questions, and that's okay, we open and welcome questions. As far as National Night Out, as you are probably aware, if you've been a part of our community for some time, it's a great event, as I was telling somebody today, it looks like the State Fair came and vomited on Warren Movie Theater parking lot, and it actually does. We actually, the success of our National Night Out, which is a little bit different, has expanded and grown to other communities around us, so typically, National Night Out is a nationwide initiative that occurs on the first Tuesday of August each year in most of the United States, it's happened since 1984, and generally speaking, community groups or community neighborhoods would come together in their different cul-de-sacs or their different neighborhoods specific. Moore, prior to me, had an idea and worked with local businesses and partnerships to consolidate that to one location where they could bring everybody together at once, and then the community could come to the National Night Out event, and it's been extremely successful, so successful that there's another community to the south of us that actually sent representatives up a few years ago to see if they could mimic ours, and currently mimic ours, not to the level of success, but they're trying, and they will get there one day, I'm sure, they're good people, and they try to keep up with Moore, but ours is honestly, I brag about, I brag about our National Night Out, really because it is probably, arguably, I'll say arguably to give myself a little out, one of the best in the state of Oklahoma. Honestly, and I'm not saying that in an arrogant way, it really is, and it's talked about. We will have thousands of people there, John Ireland and his team will cook thousands of hamburgers and hot dogs, along with over 155 other vendors that are signed up to be out there tomorrow night, giving out free things, giving out free food, having a quality time, and what it's so neat about it, it is truly representative of Moore Strong in our community and the strength of our community, and it brings us together for a safe and family-oriented event where everybody can come and hang out, and luckily enough, this year, I was telling the manager, I think we're going to have a high tomorrow of 92, and by 7 to 9, it should be in the low 90s, which is a blessing for us in Oklahoma, something we're not used to for National Night Out. We've looked at other states, like Texas and other communities in Oklahoma, will do it in October because of the weather, but we've just always felt it important to hold true to the August date, and whether it's hot or whether it's nice out, we feel like members of the Moore community are strong enough to take it whichever way, so we hope that you're there, it's for citizens to meet their community leaders as much as it is for the community to get together, and it's going to be a great event, the Warren Theater from 7 to 9 tomorrow night.
Great, thank you very much, and it really has, even if it were 100 degrees, it would still be packed, so, coming out, and I have one more thing, but it has left me, it will probably come back, if not, well, you'll just miss it. So, Mr. City Manager, Trust Manager, did you have anything?
Mayor and Council, the renovation of City Hall continues on the second floor, it's been totally vacated, they seem to be a few days ahead of schedule, so that's always good, and they should be moving downstairs in the community development later this month.
Great.
Yes, yeah, last week, I had the opportunity to speak at the Chamber of Commerce, gave our State of the City address, and again, appreciate our Moore Chamber hosting that and giving us an opportunity to just highlight Moore, Oklahoma, so thank you for all that you guys do. Galen, did you want to introduce somebody quickly?
Mayor and Council, good evening, it's my pleasure to introduce to you our new Assistant Emergency Management Director, Ethan Fiddler. He will, he comes to us.
Say his name again.
Ethan Fiddler.
Ethan, okay.